Thank you very much, and amen. And Commissioner Farrell, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sir, would everyone rise for the pledge? Let's delete. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Well, it is my pleasure, as the very first piece of business this evening, to welcome Northwood's Lady Chargers, and we have a resolution, a proclamation, to read to you, and I don't know if you want to just gather up here, and we will do that together. I think it's important, too, that you get to meet all of the commissioners here. I am Cindy Perry, the Mayor of Pittsburgh. We have Jay Farrell, Kyle Ship, James Rose, Pamela Ball, and John Fox. People's names here on. And this is So, this is the proclamation which is being presented to you tonight. The Town of Pittsburgh Proclamation in recognition of the 2022 High School Women's Basketball 3A State Championship, whereas Northwood High School of Pittsburgh, North Carolina, has achieved prominence in high school athletic competition during the 2021 and 22 academic year. And whereas the women's basketball team of Northwood High School, under the tutelage of head coach Carrie Snipes and assistant coaches Kevin Forster, Tommy Snipes, Jasmine Atkins, Janzine Billings, and Jerry Lux, and whereas the Lady Chargers basketball team were led by team captains Carolyn Allen, Natalie Bell, Maile Mar, and Olivia Porter. And whereas the Lady Chargers basketball team compiled a regular session, regular season conference record of 12 victories and zero defeats en route to the winning of the 2021-22 3A Central Carolina Conference Championship. And whereas the Lady Chargers basketball team advanced to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association State 3A Women's Basketball Championship Bracket with a record of 24 victories and only one defeat, and the number two seed ranking. And whereas the Lady Chargers basketball team continued their winning in the 3A State Playoffs en route to the finals of the State 3A Women's Basketball Championship on March the 12th, 2022. And whereas the Lady Chargers basketball team participated in state champion finals and distinguished itself by winning the State 3A Women's Basketball Championship for the 2021-22, culminating their season with an overall record of 30 wins, victories, and only one defeat. And whereas Olivia Porter was recognized as the 2022 3A K-Yow State Championship Most Valuable Player, and Tekeah Bland was recognized as the 2022 3A Women's Basketball Most Outstanding Player. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Cindy Perry, Mayor of the Town of Pittsburgh, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and our citizens, declare that Northwood High School Women's Basketball Team for this year, including the team members Carolyn Allen, Natalie Bell, Maile Mar, Olivia Porter, Gianna McMahon, Tekeah Bland, Sarah Barber, Skylar Adams, Natalie Whitaker, Meredith Bean, Anna Bolajak, Michelle Cardozo Otes, Sarah Wiles, and the team managers, Jacquetas Fuller and Kiana Nettles, are hereby commended for outstanding achievements on the court, and congratulations for its historic accomplishment in capturing the 3A Women's Basketball Championship for the state, the very first state championship for any sport at Northwood High School. Second, that copies of this proclamation will be certified and forthwith transmitted to Northwood High School Coach Carrie Snipes, Northwood High School Athletic Director Cameron Vernon, Northwood High School Principal Dr. Brad Walston, and the Chatham County Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anthony Jackson, on behalf of the Lady Chargers team. This proclamation will be spread upon the permanent records of the Town of Pittsburgh this the 23rd of May, 2022. Absolutely beautiful. And I'm just so proud of you all and what you have done. It's just magnificent. And look at this sign.
So, as part of this, as you may have seen other communities, this is not the sign that will go on the road, but this is the exact size of it. So when you come into Pittsburgh, we're going to put a DOT official sign, we already applied for DOT, this will be, it says, "Welcome to Pittsburgh," this will be the sign hanging there. So, this sign, we have this one, a little bit smaller one, this is for y'all to keep, this is for Northwood High School, you know, as a token of our appreciation and just recognition of y'all and the great achievement you have. So we look forward to working with DOT, having them on the road, people coming to Pittsburgh, they see y'all's achievement every time they come in, can brag about it when you're driving the friend's road, which could be more happier for y'all and for the community. So, I figured it'd be a great professional opportunity. Y'all want to come over here and say, "What's going on?"
Yes, yes.
The signs are a little less intense, so It's not a sandwich.
And by the way, the team really, really appreciates all the support that you guys have given us, we truly, truly appreciate it. You guys have no idea how much it means. Seeing this, like, this kind of really makes it, like, sink in. I mean, we really want to stay a champion.
They made us all proud. Want us to put that back in the cardboard? Well, let's put that Not our manager, Kobe?
Yeah.
We've just got a couple posters that maybe you would like for the town, that's just got all those posters on. So, whoever, we got three, we can get some more.
Thank you so much. I'll put these right here.
Our coffee machine has been made out since before Christmas, and I'm not sure if it's a certain part. The one machine is back order, but the replacement machine is, the earliest delivery is August, and I'm not really sure how, how much I believe that. I'm sure parts of it are, but I called, I didn't believe that they were all back orders, so I called all the manufacturers, and they are all back. So it must be one part that's in all of them that they can't get. So they're in the process of refurbishing of the cat, so they can get probably back here before August.
People who aren't coming back to work at offices and all, staying home. So it looks like it would not be as much to me.
They're not, they're not working anywhere, so that would be, they either manage out.
This weekend, they're a few miles from each other. See the upright, and work, and work.
Oh, just the one for Mr. Barber. Okay, thank you. May we then have a motion for the resolution of sympathy to go to the Barber family?
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Bonnet. Seconded by Commissioner Ship. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Under Citizens Matters, the first thing is Manager's Update. And Chris Kennedy, can you bring us, bring us your updates?
Madam Mayor, can I get a motion to the job, the agenda first, please?
We were celebrating so completely. Can we have a motion on the agenda? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously to have the agenda as it is stated here. Now we'll have the Manager's Update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief this evening. One, you'll hear me talk enough, I believe, this evening. But wanted to just let the folks out there know that we are trying different setups with the board here in the room. So you'll notice we've been in, this is our second room now. We had, we were in a different room on April 25th, we had a different setup in this room on May 9th. So we're tinkering with our setup a little bit, so we appreciate the patience for those watching via Zoom. As you see the board maybe move around the room or different adjustments, we're trying to see what works best for the board for the long term. So we'll be tinkering a little bit over the next few meetings, hopefully then gaining the feedback from the board and from the public, what works best. So we appreciate both the board's patience and maybe being set up in different ways, as well as the public's patience, as you come to expect some reliability when you log onto Zoom or show up to a meeting about where the board is situated. So, beyond that, just a quick update on the water. Our levels of free ammonia, we did a press release, or a series of those submitted in the last few weeks with excess of free ammonia coming from the city of Greensboro. Our levels are back, restored to where they typically should be. We are continuing to have conversations with Greensboro. We expect a meeting of the minds, if it were, in the coming weeks. The City Manager's Office, Granger, will reach out to me, I know they've been in contact with some of the board members as well. So we look forward to having some more productive conversations. We felt like we had some productivity there, but this latest event, because the SOC does not cover hand sanitizer exceedance, if you will, we found a hole in some of the communication, so we want to make sure that we repair that. And just like any relationship, it takes some intent and constant cultivation to make sure that it's productive. So with that, that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Kennedy. My meeting with respect to the Climate Change Advisory Committee is later this week, on Thursday, but in the meantime, we've been busy. On the, on the 10th, I met with officials from Sanford and other members of staff and the Commissioner, two Commissioners, and on the 18th, had a wonderful event at the George Moses Horton School, in which books were being dedicated with respect to the life and importance of the life of George Moses Horton. We've celebrated the opening of a new business, Harrison Company Insurance, in the Mosaic, and had a very large turnout for that. Tomorrow I'll be interviewed at the WCHL radio program called Chatham Roundup, and look forward to doing that. And then on the 26th of May, we'll be Zooming with Greensboro to try to work out some of the communication issues. So that's what I've been up to the last two weeks. Mayor Per Timbald?
Thank you very much. I don't actually have anything to report. My meeting with Triangle J will actually be on Wednesday of this week, at which time I will send you all the, you to report the after-meeting report. So this has not been a busy week for me, with the board, but of course the other things it always is. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonnet, is your microphone functional, or shall we pass this one?
I think it's functional and I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Farrell?
PVA did not meet this last week or this week. I have just one concern. I guess I'll just go ahead and go right quick right now, Chris. Two weeks ago, on the Chatham Park annexation, it kind of came up on me a little quicker than I'd expected, but I was understanding that they were under voluntary annexation. And we did not approve, we approved their annexation, but it was on hold. Is that correct? Right. But I mean, do we not have it down for site plan? Was it?
So for the, we had three annexations last week. So we had two for Chatham Park, or one for the Chatham Park Commerce Center, one for the Dell website, which we referred to previously as the Towns Attract, and one for Mr. Oldham's track on 1551. We had a public hearing for each of the three. Mr. Oldham's track, we went ahead and voted to annex into the corporate lands. The other two were, a public hearing was held and closed, but action was delayed until two of those projects were concurrent with site plan and other site development documents.
But they are involuntary annexation?
No, they are voluntary.
I'm sorry?
It's a, it's a, they are the ones requesting to be annexed. They have simply just asked for a delay in the formal approval of the annexation that will come in likely the next couple of months.
Okay. But is that something that we routinely done? It seemed like all their annexations have been, when they come to the board, it's automatically annexed.
Okay, that's it. It's customary that you'll see a site plan run with the annexation. So we've had times in recent memory where you'll, we'll have an annexation, a public hearing on the agenda first, because public hearings come before the new business, which where a non-public hearing site plan would be. And so back when the board was approving site plans, you, we would have customarily had that annexation say, hey, will you hold off until we approve the site plan? Because we want to make sure we have an approval on that before the annexation's approved. So we would have done that, generally be done the same meeting. Now that the site plans are staff level, they submitted their annexation documents and petitions in advance and their site plan development documents are running slower than the annexation. And so simply they've asked us to put a pause on the formal vote to allow the other documents to catch up. Once those are approved by staff, they will then say, hey, you may go ahead and annex.
So that won't come back to the board?
It'll come back to the board simply for a vote. A public hearing has already been checked, as far as that box goes, and you'll just have likely a consent agenda item at that time and just say, hey, we're asking you to formally annex this property.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question.
Commissioner Ship?
Sure. Tuesday, May 10th, I did, I attended the meeting in Sanford with the mayor. And that was a good meeting that we'll talk more about this evening. And then Thursday, May 12th, I was able to attend the Central Carolina Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year banquet. And that was really exciting at Sanford for all four clubs associated there. It's really exciting to see the kids and their accomplishments in the last year and to be able to do it in person this year, too. Wednesday, May 18th, was the Chatham EDC meeting, and that is a very exciting meeting these days. Lots of activity at both mega sites. Of course, we know about Vinfast. There's a lot of other things going on around that site and then also with this other city cam site. The, a great need, of course, is houses for those and a school for that, particularly in Monkeer. So there's work on that. The county is starting on the small area plan for that area in Monkeer. The state DEQ has added a staff member specifically for economic development. So that should help with some of those things related to DEQ. Central Carolina Community College has a lot of workforce development programs already going and more pending and a lot of, you know, funding coming up for that, a lot of exciting things with Central Carolina. And then we also worked on a update of the strategic plan for the Economic Development Corporation and staffing going forward. So that was a longer meeting this, that week. Thursday, also attended the ribbon cutting at Harrison Company. And Saturday, I was able to attend the CRC Remembrance Event for victims of lynchings in Chatham County. And then also, while not an official event, the Spray Park opened and I have at least, but at least two members of my family, they're very excited about that. So Roy and I had a good time down there and a few times since. So Thursday, coming up on this Thursday, I have the meeting with some Greensboro officials and staff. And then June 1st is the next Main Street Pittsburgh meeting. And we'll be talking more agreement there as we roll that back into town. For a concern, just seems, seems common, but just the grass around town. I know we recently passed or I guess clarified that ordinance there. And there's some places around town that need to, need to get on their grass. So if we could help remind them, some commercial and some residential. I'll refrain from calling them out now.
Thank you. Commission votes.
I also met in Sanford with Mayor Perry, Commissioner Ship and the leadership of Sanford on the 10th. The next Tarpro meeting is Thursday of this week and the Chatham Arts Council meets Tuesday, June 14th. That's really all I have.
Very good. Public comment, is there a list of persons wishing to speak this evening?
Madam Mayor, I had one person inquire last week and I responded back, but I haven't heard. So I'm not sure that anyone else is available to speak.
Is there anyone that is zooming in that wishes to speak on the three-minute public input session? Hearing none, and we'll proceed to the consent agenda, which this evening has five items listed for expedient approval, non-controversial routine items. Is there any modification of that consent agenda? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Make a motion to approve?
Moved by Commissioner Ship. Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. As opposed, motion carries unanimously. There are no public hearings tonight, no old business. And so the first matter of new business is the adoption of the proposed manager's annual budget for 2022-23. And as we know, this has been the subject of special sessions of the board and a series of input sessions with the manager and department heads to public hearings. And those were held on April 25th and May 9th. So we've now come to the point where we have adoption of requests before the board tonight. I think all of us are pleased that we are able to offer a budget that has 44 cents per $100 evaluation, which is very much in line with what it has been in the past and except for some little fractions. So did you want to make a presentation?
Really, Madam Mayor, the only update I have is, I think it's a, it's a good thing. We've only made one adjustment to the budget. And it's due to some, some expeditious conversations that we've had with Mr. Edward Holmes and his family. You know, we had talked about having a comfort station, which laypeople call restrooms. Looking at a restroom facility at Mary Hayes Barber Homes Park. And so the Holmes family said that they would be interested in helping us with a donation up to 50% of the cost of that. We've, so Mr. Holmes worked with Katie Keller, our parks planner. They've looked at a project and looking at a total of $150,000 with the Holmes family contributing 50% of that. And so we've made an adjustment to the budget. So Capital Project Fund 990, which is our Parks and Recreation Capital Project Fund, we have taken appropriated fund balance for $75,000, recognized revenue from the Holmes family for another $75,000 to fund that $150,000 project. And so that is the only adjustment we've made to the budget since you saw it last. So from, on the general fund side, as Madam Mayor already discussed, we're proposing a budget with a tax rate of 44 cents per $100 assessed valuation. On the water sewer side, we're proposing a 15% increase in the water and sewer rates from this year's numbers. And again, the only number changes that we have in the entire budget are adding that $150,000 for that restroom facility at Mary Hayes Barber Homes Park. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. If there are no other questions, I know we've had a lot of conversations about this. I've provided you an updated add-on chart list, just for your consideration. I've included that park restroom in that, in that item. And I corrected the pickup trucks fraction for Commissioner Ship and Commissioner Farrell's sake. The, but happy to answer any questions you have. If there are no further conversations or discussion needed, certainly staff would be privileged to entertain a motion to approve the budget and setting up a tax rate of 44 cents per $100 assessed valuation.
Are there further questions for the manager?
I don't have any questions, but I'll make this comment. I'm still not pleased with the 15% increase in the rate on the water and sewer. I'm just, I'm really struggling with that because I know expenses have gone up, but that is quite a bit of jump. I was hoping we could get eight to 10 max. I don't know how the commissioners feel about that, but I'm still a little concerned about 15% increase. Don't get me wrong, I know we need it because we've got some issues and a lot of expenses, but that's a quite a bit increased for some of our citizens here in town.
Well, I've shared that same concern. But in addition to, I still have the same concerns I've had regarding the Recreation Coordinator and the Parks Maintenance Superintendent. I don't know if we need to add both of those positions at this, at this time, but whatever the preference of the board, I will go along with that, but I still object to those. And I would have preferred a smaller rate increase, maybe 12%.
Further comments or questions?
Just a comment, too. I think, you know, I think we'd all like to have lower increases or reductions in the rates for water and sewer. And we, we did do it as tight as possible this year, going down from a 20% proposed down to 15%. But it's not great, which is why we've got some of the following items on the agenda this evening about longer-term solutions to water and sewer issues that we can't solve on our own. And then in terms of Parks and Rec, I appreciate Katie's presentation on that and the input from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and I do support their requests.
And I'm glad you brought that up. One of the things we had with the presentation, and I wasn't able to forward that to the board, the Parks and Rec Advisor Board did offer a letter of support for those positions. Silence for miss and not communicating that sooner. But Mr. Ford, who spoke at the last meeting, they had a Parks and Rec Advisor Board a couple of days after our last meeting, and then they got together and discussed this and they were in support of the budget that was provided. So I appreciate the prompt for me missing. Thank you.
Anything further? Or is there a motion?
I'll add, Commissioner Farrell and Baldwin, that I also share these concerns. And I feel like we, it's a frequent theme that we recognize that our town has limited resources. We bump up against these limitations and yet we all continue to hear for increasing demands for services. And that's the part that the public sees. And then on the enterprise side, what they don't see is maybe quite so often because our staff are so competent in keeping things running despite the problems with the system. What the public often doesn't see is the eroding pipes and the equipment that needs to be replaced. And we've drained our coffers and we've got to replace them. As Commissioner Ship often says, we emptied our piggy bank for the advanced filtration. And it's not comfortable. It's not fun. But I trust staff and the numbers that they've gone over so carefully. So I reluctantly go along with this increase. As far as the tax increase, the Advalorum, I looked at that and with discomfort as well, because I just feel like so many of my neighbors have pointed out that their taxes increased anyway just because of the rising property values. So I looked carefully at it and it looked to me like it was about, for most of my neighbors, $200 to $300 increase in their Advalorum taxes. Of course, it's a wide range based on the property values. And there again, not comfortable with it, but I do think that we have to and it seems reasonable to round it up. So I'll be going along with it, but again, thank you, Commissioner Ship, for pointing out that on the enterprise side, the utility side, we are going to be trying to grapple with these issues later on in the meeting to think long-term solutions so that we don't have to keep raising rates. So I'll make the motion for approval of the budget.
Commissioner Bonnet makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Vos. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Madam Mayor, may I ask Mr. Bonnet's for an amendment?
Pardon?
May I ask Commissioner Bonnet's for a slight amendment?
Certainly.
Be a motion to approve and setting of the, and setting of the tax rate at 44 cents per $100 assessed valuation?
Yes, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Vos, is that a compliant with your second? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I reluctantly say aye because I know how important it is to have a 100% vote on the budget, but I'm still pretty stubborn, Chris. Thank you.
I'm shocked.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. Lovely. So the motion carries with a unanimous vote. The second item under new business, oh, may I stop and ask? Is, I noticed there is earth-moving equipment at the water plant. Is there an update on the advanced filtration system? Is that still planning to be in in July?
So we're still going as fast as ever with that project, still hoping to have delivery here in just about, about 60 days now, I guess. So the contract date for basically substantial completion, basically where we can turn the plan on is July 20th. So we sit here, look to have some great work done, looking for delivery, everything as our report to the board. The only thing that we are seeking some accommodation on is a submersible pump. And so we're still working with CDM Smith to move that forward. And so we're going to do everything we can to make sure that that doesn't stall the project. So we look forward to having that done. I trust between the resources, that between us and certainly CDM Smith, who's an international company, we'll be able to find a pump that can accommodate us until the permanent one can be installed. And hopefully, the manufacturer's suggesting that it would be delivered in September. I'm hoping that they're hedging a little bit and it'll be delivered much sooner than that. But we shall see. But either way, we're going to do our best to find an alternative in a temporary fashion to make sure we can get that up and running in the month of July.
Very good. The next item is Town of Pittsboro Local Government Commission Final Performance Indicators. And did you want to address this, Chris?
Yes, ma'am. So this next item is an item we've never had to deal with before because the LGC has never asked us this before. So the FPIC, for lack of, you know, the many terrible acronyms that can come out of governmental agencies, is a financial performance indicator of concern. And I think that that certainly sounds much more ominous than what it probably is for us in this current fiscal year. And so we received our audit a number of months ago. Sharpe Patel formed the audit for us. They typically do a very good job for us. One of the things in that presentation that I think that many of us were not acutely aware of, we've talked about with our auditor Jay Sharp about making this more prominent moving forward. um we've talked about with our auditor Jay Sharp about making this more prominent moving forward. Um uh because we went back, and there actually is a slide that suggests this. I we I just didn't remember it, and I felt like I would have remembered something as significant as this, and um certainly the first year of a budget, or certainly first year of implementation by the L G C is something to be missed, but um this concern is is for our enterprise fund where in the fiscal year twen- twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, so not the one we were in now, but the one we just got out of June thirtieth of last year. When you look at our operational expenditures, they outpace our revenues for that side. Um as you can see here on in the information, only about just over eight thousand dollars. When you look at a budget that's, you know, in the millions, eight thousand dollars is is could be classified as de minimis. The L G C uh whether it's a dollar or a million dollars is going to ask folks to start doing this. There are more and more utilities um are are coming on to their um agendas for concern, getting on the the L G C watch list, other types of things. Um and a lot of folks, you know, have similar issues. It's it's not a uh, you know, a absent fiduciary response. It is simply that things are getting more expensive every year, and it's harder and harder to run a efficient, small utility. Um and so when projections get askew even just a little bit, we can run into this. Um to to give the board some, I I don't think it's comfort, but some insight. This would this would obviously have been kind of an old old thing for us, because if you look at the last ten fiscal years in in eight of those ten years, we would have had to sign this document. And so certainly that is that is uh uh an indication that we there's something there, and it could be go back to the rates and other types of factors. Um it could be individual years of expense, but the only years that were that were not that were fiscal years twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen respectively. Um and those could have simply just been not doing projects. Um you know, you kind of run into something where you don't do that. Um part of the reason that we're we move more into capital project funds is to avoid this as well. So this is not capital expenses, it's strictly operational expense. So this is not a a capital project that uh got over over its waistband. This is operational expenses that we have, you know, chemicals and and all the things that we hear about so much. And so when I look at eight thousand dollars, uh that could be, you know, a month load of chemicals that got delivered early that ran us over. Um certainly, a- as it suggests, it's an indicator of concern. We want to make sure that our revenues that are intended to be conservative outpace the expenditures. Um and so I feel comfortable that we're going to move forward with this and not have to sign this again. Um we'll see how this year stacks up, but as we look into next year, um certainly are we will strive to make sure that we don't continually uh become an habitual F pick endorsers. Um they send this to the L G C, so um it it's something that should definitely pique the interest of the board. Um I have no doubt that it did and does. Um it certainly piques interest of of staff. We will get this um document executed. Um and and I think this this is just a testament to how the L G C takes it seriously is that there are very few documents that require so many signatures. And for for this for this document, it requires my signature as town manager, our finance officer signature, the mayor's, and a quorum of the board. Um I can't recall any other document that we've sent. We've committed to millions of dollars of projects with basically two signatures on stuff. Um so I think this is one of those things where we want to make sure that the boards are aware. I think it's more of a a heavier approach by the L G C. Um I I suspect they're growing frustrated and dealing with some of the the utilities who who do this, and some probably uh more intentional than us. I don't think anything on our part was intentional. Um so I I I can't say that I'm a uh the most informed person on this type of thing. I've I've done a crash course over the last few weeks when the L G C found out we were supposed to turn this in. Um and that's a conversation we also discussed with with our auditor as well as, okay, we want to make sure we get our our proper documentation to the state. Um so the audit was approved. Again, they put process all that, but we just had to fill this document out. So I'll be happy to answer any questions as I can. Um but again, I I think it's one of those things, as it stated, it's it's a it's a concern that we're spending more than we're bringing in. Um uh but luckily, this isn't, you know, a million dollars. This is eight thousand dollars. So I think this is something that we could certainly recover from.
All right. Further questions for Chris Kennedy?
I I I just think uh not to be missed in the letter is part of our resolution and how we'll avoid this in the future. And last year, it was raising water rates by forty three percent, sewer rates by eighteen percent, and then raising both of them by fifteen percent again this year. So um that's not easy to do. This is easy to do what we did this year, but it's it's a real problem, and and I appreciate the L G C for keeping a close eye on it. Um and uh I I will volunteer to be one of the quorum to sign this, because I think it's important. But I don't want one next year.
Thank you. Anything further?
Just one comment. Uh uh Mr. Kennedy, I certainly do appreciate your explanation of this, because I was quite concerned when I had received that notification via you. So I do appreciate your full explanation, and basically that it wasn't that wasn't something that we were not doing, that basically this is something that had occurred certainly in the past, but hopefully, as you indicated, this hopefully won't happen again in the future, but I certainly do appreciate your explanation.
Yes, ma'am. And and as you each of you know, accounting has a lot of different functions with it. And so some of this, when you look at depreciation and how that's factored into to your books and stuff, that kind of is is on there too. So this is we we deducted depreciation from this, and so we're working to make sure that that again, I I suspect when we come to the audit next year, each of you are going to go, hey, are we going to sign that thing again? And so if I I I I hope that if nothing else, this is a great learning opportunity for us, year one, to 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 learn about it, master the concept of it, and and hopefully avoid it in the future. So thank you, Miss Vaughn.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, moved by Commissioners Ship, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin, stating that um the letter is to be recommended to be signed by the various officials and that that document then sent to the local government commission. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The third matter under new business is the resolution declaring intent to regionalize Town of Pittsburgh Water and Wastewater Utility with the Town of Sanford. And before I turn this over to um Chris Kennedy, I guess I'd I'd just like to say that I thought the resolution itself was just um a a stunning uh recitation of the history of this uh for the town. I guess I did not realize how far back it reached, but starting in nineteen ninety nine, uh I felt like that that um has has shown the shortage of wastewater capacity and they, you know, of course, we all know the various water quality problems we're having, but to, you know, to place the citizens of the town um on the mercy of of upstream discharges and 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 not having any capacity for our own um uh development. It just, it seems like uh it is a a very, very thorough explanation. You know, um I think we have been preoccupied so much with Chatham Park that in a way we um you know, Pittsburgh's growth is not just Chatham Park. It's also an asset which should be available to all of our citizens and um and landowners, and it just makes it more compelling uh to know that we're going to be uh reaching out to try to improve um those over the next couple of months, that we will be seeking to explore this regional concept, the details and create space, and I'm sure a process for citizen input. Um I've already had several people call me and ask me uh to make sure that we have plenty of citizen input. And we'll listen carefully to that and and keep the public informed, but you know, regionalization is not just a a development issue. I mean, what we're talking about here is a safety issue as well. A health and safety issue to make sure that our citizens um are in a community that has proper disposal of wastewater and and um in in proper drinking water. So I look forward to um what may come from this. And and Chris Kennedy, did you want to go into further explanation?
Uh just briefly, Mayor, and I appreciate your comments. Um uh I had a bit of a research project, as you can tell, in preparing the resolution, and um a- as they kind of say, I I really wanted to put a blanket over top of the the conversation. When I came here um a couple of years ago, you know, there was mention, oh, yeah, we we've had a moratorium. And and you know, we kind of took that for granted. I think most of us have heard about that, or you know, depending on our our tendency, certainly in town. Um and obviously, I I've got a great um uh history book to my left here, Mr. Messick. Um and who who's kind of been through it all. Um and as I told him last week, I have a great deal of empathy for him sitting here and watching all this for so many years. Um he did tell me a story about how the the mayor and commissioner used to smoke during meetings, and I just can't fathom. Mayor Perry, you just light up a a palm all in front of me right now. But uh certainly, there's part of the times we wanted to smoke a cigarette during meetings, but I can't fathom the day to day where that was acceptable. Um anyway, I I digress on that. Um but I I to your point, I do think it was uh what I endeavored upon when I started writing that resolution was, when did we first formally talk about our coordination with the City of Sanford? And so I was going back through our records that we have available, going through minutes. Um and really, it was it was towards the end of the the moratorium there in October of two thousand and eleven, where we in oh nine, we had shifted from partnering at what was was a partnership between Pittsburgh, Chatham County, at the time, the Toll Brothers Project. That was kind of the the uh predecessor in many ways to to, you know, they were the big developer then. Chatham Park was was Tim and Bubba were around. Their first resoning was in two thousand and six, but it was really the Toll Brothers in that oh nine effort. And then when that moratorium had had ceased in eleven, that's when um the the board said in the ordinance, hey, let's look at the City of Sanford. And there was a they commissioned a three month time period that ended on Christmas Day of two thousand and eleven before coming towards that. And even though that moratorium ended on that day, on Christmas Day, um all the conversations have continued. And we worked through some of the efforts there. We've looked at moving discharges from the Hall River into Robeson Creek, which we did. We moved from two point four seven, we took four hundred and ninety nine thousand gallons from that, moved it over to Robeson Creek. Um that's where our current discharge is today uh with one point two four nine million into Robeson Creek. Um and we've we've looked at other alternatives over time, and and certainly the projects are uh behind pace. We would would have hoped that Sanford Forest Main to country project to be at least well underway, if not already constructed. Um I think the City of Sanford would agree with that as well. They were expecting revenue from us in the year of twenty twenty. Um and and that line still isn't built, or hasn't even started. Um we hope to have that, you know, bidlet this summer, but again, it's uh it's it's seen delays before, so we hope to avoid that, but um so that was really the point of the resolution, was trying to try to document this and um be it conversations that we've had with the public at staff level, or conversations we've had with our own staff of, you know, gosh, like, where did this come from? You know, what do you know, what is this? And and so I I felt like it was it would be appropriate and productive to to kind of map that out, going back, you know, twenty three years until April of nineteen ninety nine. And and looking at that and saying, okay, we have, we have um uh created opportunities for ourselves today to to do uh better about providing water and sewer. And I told this board uh when I got here that I was going to work very hard to provide the town and the community generations worth of water and sewer capacity to the best of my ability. And we've had some conversations since I arrived and about how to go about doing that. Um I think one thing that um I wish to make known, if anything, is uh one, this isn't a ten. This isn't a guarantee. This isn't a shell. Um Sanford's under no obligation to 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 work with us, or they're not compelled to to take our water and sewer needs. Um we've we feel like we have a good partner with them, and I think that's also to, for the second part of, this is an opportunity. Um there there's there's been this conversation of the kind of the last resort. Um I don't believe this is a last resort. I think there are there have been, we've investigated, obviously, for twenty three years now. When we first started the the moratorium there um in nineteen ninety nine, we've investigated different strategies. Um and so I think thi- this is a tremendous opportunity um with perhaps a finite window of working with the City of Sanford. They're at getting asked by many folks for demand on their system. The um the discharges, particularly from the on the wastewater side, are precious, and they're they're rare. And so having someone who's got an ability to tap into that and and support us with that, I think is a tremendous opportunity. Um a- and so I think it will be a a very interesting ride, if nothing else. Um I think we will do everything we can to make it work. Um there's been a lot of conversations about how how this works, and a lot of that will be to be determined. Um I've got the the agreements um that the Town of Wake Forest has with the City of Raleigh. They they merged their utility in two thousand and four. And the Town of Zebulon just merged theirs about forty five days ago with City of Raleigh. And the documents are largely the same. And so I find that to be comforting in many ways for yourselves as a board, and certainly me, and and my supportive view as a board, to say, is this document, this agreement going to work? And I think this, you know, to to an individual community, which oftentimes we can sallow ourselves um at times and say, well, gosh, I don't know. I've never heard anybody doing this. You know, is this going to work? And I think having someone, you know, just next door, you know, county over from us, who has done this. Um, you know, Morrisville's merged with Cary and 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 forsaken their utilities. Um, you know, the northeastern side of of Wake County, they've they've moved over with the City of Raleigh. Um so I think we will borrow from those and take take what we appreciate out of those documents and not try to reinvent the wheel with this. There will certainly be things. Um I'll borrow a little bit from Madison Silver, who came for the Mosaic Hotel, and talked about something distinctively Pittsburgh. Um I I like that adage, um where certainly we we will borrow as much as we can to make sure that the legal framework is in there. But we have a very unique utility. We have a very unique needs. So does the City of Sanford. And so we will make sure that that whatever document comes out of of any investigation will be distinctively uh Pittsburgh and Sanford. Um with regard to some of the public process, one of the things, um last Monday, I signed the um a contract to for our future land use plan. I had been a little bit reticent to sign that um over the last few months as we negotiated that. That was approved in last year's budget. You know, we could have signed them on July first of twenty twenty one, but not knowing where we were going to be at with water and sewer concerned me about seeking out a fifty thousand dollar endeavor to look at something when we don't have any capacity to grow. Um and so what we have done is we've signed that contract with Stuart. Um Stuart's going to work on that project for us. It should be about six month project. We're targeting um an approval around Thanksgiving or Christmas of this year. Um one thing or a couple of things that'll bring in, um of course, it brings the future land use plan that's up to date and not the twenty twelve version we have today. So that's that's a bonus of itself. But on the, I'll call it the positive externality side, it'll also give us the public input that we seek. It's going to be really hard for for the public to come in and say, hey, this sewer agreement or water agreement needs this adjustment. Uh those documents are hard to comment on. What but what we're really talking about is the land uses that that need those types of things. And so as we look at our jurisdiction, you know, we have a unique situation. We we have um uh you know, legislative authority to go to three miles with our E T J. That's uncommon. Um with our scale, we would typically only be one mile of E T J. So we have more than that. Um knowing how our growth is going to go. So looking at the future land use plan will be really productive for us. It'll also help the overall negotiation, if you will, with the City of Sanford, because I I would suspect one of the things that that they're nervous about or anxious about is understanding what our demand is. It's one thing to look at, um you know, a Chatham Park project. But you know, the the conversation this board and I have had since I've been here is we want Chatham Park to be a neighborhood of Pittsburgh. Not the only thing in Pittsburgh. And so as we look at downtown, as we look at the western side of Pittsburgh, um and I'm not, I'm not suggesting by any means that we're going to have a a double effect of Chatham Park, that we're going to duplicate that on the western side. But certainly, there will be other projects that are are seeking to be done in town. You've seen some of those recently. And so as we as we expand our opportunities and look to to make to integrate Chatham Park in and say, it's, oh, yes, that's that's a great neighborhood within Pittsburgh. But it's not one versus the other, or just us two together with downtown and them. Um and so I think this opportunity presents itself for that. And so the 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 land use plan and being able to go through that, understanding um how those demands go, um you know, when demand is needed, um we have an idea of build out for certain, you know, millions of gallons a day for certain things, but being able to synchronize that. Um and I think this merger allows us to utilize the existing capacities in Sanford a little better, where we can properly plan for capital improvements. Um where, you know, i- if we are a a customer of Sanford, we might be able to tap into utility capacity sooner than if we were doing the project by ourselves, or certainly just paying for the project. We're working on the the water plant project with the City of Sanford already. Um but if we were a customer, that project But if we were a customer, that project could probably happen quicker. Um, or they could say, well, I'll tell you what, you're a customer, so. Go ahead and start using some of this capacity before we're done with the rest of the project, because we know the project will be delivered in a handful of years. We'll move that forward. So. I think we'll smooth some of the edges of some of this where it's a hard and fast. Well, you know, this is your capacity. This is our capacity. Top it with the intent to regionalize the system. I think we soften that edge a little bit and have a little better grace period to, to scale up. And right now it's, it's kind of hard and fast and that's, that's frustrating for a lot of folks. So I, I think, Mayor, to your point, I think there'll be ample opportunities, um, for public input. We certainly want this to be something that the community is, is, uh. Good with, something that they, uh, find, uh, productive for us. And again, it may not work out. We may run through this whole thing and something may fall apart with it. Uh, we don't know that yet. I, I. I want to think positively and say that it's going to work, that we will go through the process. We will make this work. That is certainly what we're declaring our intent to be. And I think we have two great, we have one great partner becoming two partners coming together to, to make this happen. And I really think it alleviates. A lot of the strain and consternation we've had over the last few decades and presents us a, a true solution to, to the problem we've had for so long. So with that, I'll, I'll quit talking and allow the board to, to ask questions or comment further.
Questions for Chris?
Thank you, Chris, for the explanation. I guess the only, it's the only comment I have right now is, uh, with this, uh, resolution with intent. I guess it kind of brings some attention to our employees. Um, I've had a few calls. I guess what I'm trying to say, we hadn't, we hadn't spoke much on the employees and staff that, how the job is going to be, uh. Handled or what's going to be coming up in the future. But I guess, uh, since this is a letter of intent, nothing's in concrete or anything like that. But, uh, I do want to make that known to, it's very important to me that higher staff and, and employees are. Go through this more or less.
Yeah. And Commissioner Farah, I couldn't agree more. And as you know, I, I like to. I feel like everything's based on relationships.
Right.
And, and certainly my staff, I take very seriously. I'm, I'm a pretty lighthearted person. I don't, I don't generally get too puffy and puffy about stuff, but if you mess with my staff, I will get, I will get in your kitchen real quick. And I'm very protective of them. And so every conversation I've had with the city of Sanford regarding something. Either direct or akin to this, I have, my first thing has been, I want all my people to have an opportunity at a job. I can't guarantee they get hired. I can't guarantee that they'll stay there. They may get hired and not work worth a lick. And I wouldn't want to keep them if they don't do that anyway. And, but I do know we have a, we have a hardworking team. They care about this town. There will still be work here to be done. There is, there is nobody better that can work on the stuff that we got in town than those guys that we have on Diane Street and at the plants. You couldn't convince me otherwise of that. So, um, I know that when we met on the, on the tenth, a couple of weeks ago. That Mayor Perry, Commissioner Vos, Commissioner Ship heard me say that again to those folks that I want my people protected. Again, there's no guarantee with any of this. Um, I know there's a lot of anxiety with it. And when I met with them directly, I said, I realize my words do not put dinner on your table or not. My actions will. But I know that myself, and I know this board will fight very hard for our folks to make sure, because they do live here. You know, they're, they're a part of our community. Even if they don't live here, they're still a part of our community. They've been here for a while. We have very, very long tenure folks in many, many capacities of that level. So. I share that. I appreciate that. I, I appreciate you bringing it up because I want them to hear consistently. How much we care about it. I think that'll be one of the things that makes us more protracted than anything. Is making sure that they're taken care of. I'll, I understand that different agencies and organizations have, you know, different ways to derive vacation time. And longevities and all those types of things. I want to do everything we can to make sure they're made whole. I don't want anybody to lose from this. You know, there, there will probably be something that is less than ideal. But to the extent that we can do it, I want to make sure that those folks there would be no different off if, if they were here for the next ten years. With the town of Pittsburgh than being with the city of Sanford for the next ten years.
Yeah. Uh, the only other, one other comment I had is regarding the, the water. I know we're having issues with the quality and all like that, but we still, do we, do we not still have a capacity of six to eight million gallons out of the hall?
So our, our seven Q ten number, which is the seven driest days over a ten-year period. Which is the maximum that the state allows you to pull from a body of waters, eight point nine million gallons a day. Our plant, current plant, the, the permit is two million gallons a day of treatment. Our functional capacity is probably closer to one point eight five or one point nine. So I would suspect that we will, depending on how some of these other conversations go. You know, we've, I've made a formal request to the legislature for funding for advanced treatment and for the short session. I've asked, uh, Representative Reeves for approximately twenty-one point six million dollars in the short session. To assist with, with our GAC project, to build that out, um, and then to do the UVAOP for one for an oxine. So, but again, that's only for the two million gallon capacity. And as we were looking at, um, you know, prior to this conversation, more of a merger. You know, the, the idea of looking at fifteen million gallons a day in town. And right now we're at two at our plant and we're working on a three million gallon line with the city of Sanford, uh, partnership with Chatham County on that one. Uh, part of that line is getting paid for with Vinfast. We talked about that, um, a few, few months ago or a few weeks back. That will bring us to five MGD. We are, we are also in the Western Tech Partnership project that will, will likely come to deliver water to Pittsburgh in. Twenty thirty to twenty thirty-two, somewhere in that timeframe. And we, we have six million gallons of capacity. We've been working with Chatham County to maybe increase that to nine million gallons of capacity. And so if you, if you have six, that takes us to eleven. And then we, when C D and Smith presented their, um. Uh, project in January of two thousand and twenty-one, they talked about taking our plant from two to six MGD. That gets us to fifteen MGD. So we've identified a number of sources for that, um, to, to provide demand for water. And Sanford would want to use those. And, and what would probably likely be the case is they will be able to deliver that capital project quicker. Uh, one of the things that we're seeing with Western Tech Partnership is it's just really tough for the partners. Those, for those four partners being Owassa. Um, Chatham County, us and, and the city of Durham. Owassa has been opted out the whole time, but they own the land that, that the, the, the plant is to be situated on. So that's, that's a leverage point, even though they're not technically a partner. We haven't been able to afford to opt into everything. We're opted in to the extent of three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in next year's budget. But if we were to fully opt in, we'd be doubling that expense next year. And so we've, we've talked, um. Uh, with the city of Sanford to say, hey, will you be able to opt in for us on part of that, you know, us join together because. That's, that's really been one of the main things that's kept us in, our foot in the door with the city of Sanford is they have no interconnection with another water utility. Neither do we. We, we are, we are two of the ones who don't really have any interconnections. Most everyone else does. Heck, Chatham County has interconnection on us, but it's not reversible. So they can take our water, but they can't give it back to us. I don't know who put that pump in the, in the, in the ground or the valve in the ground, but they, they should have thought about having to go the other way. But the, so a lot of this is, is having access. If something were to happen in the deep river. Say, the city of Sanford would like to have a backup, which would be our draw from Jordan Lake through the Western Tech Partnership. Um, and so that's been a really good, as I, I'll borrow the term again, a poker chip for us as we look at this. Regionalization is looking, how do we address the greater needs? And it's the ways of old of looking at utilities and saying, we have an incorporated limits. We're going to serve this. We're going to have our own plants. We're going to have our own people maintain the pipes. I, I think that's become, going to become a way of the past. I think we are at the, the beginning stages. Certainly there, there are folks who have beaten us to that. But I think we are going to see very soon in the, in the next decade or two. More and more utilities merge together. It's harder and harder to do it if you don't have the proper scale. There's a reason the Duke Energy is, is what they are, because people figured out they couldn't run power by themselves. There are communities that still try to be electricity, but most of them are, are getting out of it because they just can't find the people to do it. And so. Electricity has beat us to where water and sewer will likely be in a few decades. So, um. To your point, back to the, the river plant, we do have greater capacity there. Um, but knowing the, the constant concern. Um, that lingers over our heads about pouring water out of the Hall River, it would likely be our, our third choice to expand that facility. And there's, there's really no reason to expand that facility if we don't increase our sewer. Because if we don't add any more sewer, then there's nothing we can do with more water anyhow.
I just hate, I just know that, you know, that we're spending the money for the, have improved quality of water. And then have that plant sit there with a, a GAC and, uh, ionization, uh, filtration for our water. So. But that's down the road. That's way down the road, down the river.
I think, I think it's an asset to whoever's running the utility.
Yeah.
And if it may, if it stays a Pittsburgh asset, again, that, that's the main line feeding Chapel Ridge, which has got a fair number of customers. So I think that plan, I don't see it getting mothballed. I think someone's going to run that plant, whether it's us or, or anyone. And again, it's a great facility to have because it connects to our system. It's gonna, it's gonna be as sophisticated as any plan is in the country, frankly, when we get this project done. Um, and I, I look forward to, like we all do, getting some funding to do it.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kennedy, I have perceived, uh, numerous voices of concern regarding the same type situation. With the positions, possible loss of positions, things such as that. So I know that this here is just a resolution for an intent. So all of those particulars are certainly going to be down the road. And hopefully there would be options in reference to those employees. Uh, they have worked hard, as you have indicated, for the town of Pittsburgh. You have one main break there, there, in the ditch with the contractors. So they have, uh, been very loyal to Pittsburgh and everything. So I just wanted to express that to you. And even though I, I will, I am in support of the resolution of intent. And then look at some of the different options at a later date regarding that.
And then one thing I would share on the employees real quick too is, you know, when we, when we think about our, our, our guys on Diane Street. We think, uh, more on the wet side of the utility. But on the dry side of public works, you know, streets and other types of things. We may have some folks that say, I want to stay with Pittsburgh. I was, I'll, I'll convert over to the dry side. And so certainly they'll, we've got operators that are very much in line to stay operators on the utility side. You know, they've. They've got certifications. They, they've moved forward in that direction and we will support them whenever they want. But if there are anyone who would want to say, hey, I, I really don't know interested in that. I just love working for Pittsburgh and I'm, I enjoy working in public works. We, I think we will have very much have opportunities on, on the dry side as well, on the street side. That each of you know, we could, we could do a better job with as well on our maintenance side. We, we could definitely use more people. So. I think that'd be one of the options that those folks have. Again, I, I get it. If, if you're a, a water plant operator, you may not want to go jump to the street side. But if you do, I think we'll have an opportunity.
One of the things I love was that when we've been talking about personnel, uh, we've talked about how. These folks that have worked for us for so long really know the secret side of the down under of the Pittsburgh streets. And, you know, undoubtedly our system is such that, you know, it, maybe there's sort of a little magic tweak that needs to be done once in a while. That only so-and-so knows about, or only, um, you know, somebody knows that that particular valve. Might just need to be, you know, uh, fiddled with a little bit. And that's what I love about, I mean, that's what makes Pittsburgh so wonderful. And I don't think Sanford is, is, uh, I, I think Sanford recognizes that. And I think that they said as much in the meeting that we had, um, with them a couple of weeks ago. That, that they want that expertise. They want to know that the people who are going to be. Working are the people that really know what's going on. So I, I think that's another reassurance that, um, uh. You know, it's, it, it's like knowing where in the filing cabinet you put the, um. Whether you miss file or whether you're just trying to gi- give yourself job security.
I was going to say, I think the, 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 the most expeditious way to say that is our system's quirky enough that there's job security and.
Yes.
That when, when we did the NCDOT travel circle project, they opened the road and those guys would just scratch their hands like, what in the world? They just said, turn that on and see what happens. I mean, it was a lot of trial and error. So anybody, you can talk to anybody who's ever touched a water valve. And if you ever talk to Becky Smith, ask her about it with hydrostructure. She'll say, grab a, grab a valve wrench and turn that and see what happens. And, and you don't know if the road's going to belly up and swell or nothing happens, or, you know, you, you hear something across the way happen. It's. There's some quirks to it that, uh, obviously we're not intentionally designed to be quirky. Uh, but again, when you've been incorporated for as long as we have and all the water lines and such that goes in. Sometimes you patch the project and don't think about when someone opens the road up in twenty years. You just get it patched up at the time and move on.
I love it. I'll say this, this does kind of seem quick. You know, I've, I've heard that a little bit recently. Um, we have had some recent, uh, closed sessions and then the, the meeting with Sanford a week or two ago. But I, Chris, I really appreciate the, the research that you put into that resolution that, that shows the, the history of this issue in Pittsburgh and how far back that's gone. From what I had seen online previously, you know, four years of moratorium was, I think, pretty exceptional. But what was not posted online in the, in the minutes is that it went back, you know, to nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, I think that, that whole period is. It's very exceptional of a, of a moratorium on development for most of that time. So I mean, I, you know, personally, I think it's been, it's been twenty-three years that we've had this problem and it's, and the time is, is now at least to act. And, and the way I've been describing this particular resolution is, is a plan to make a plan. As you know, as you said, it's not binding. It's, um, but we, we need to make a plan, uh, and we need to, to figure it out. There's a lot of things to figure out. Rates, expansion, um, e- employees, certainly, you know, we talked about like, there's a lot of those things that we need to figure out. Uh, as a part of this process, and this is just the start of, of figuring that out. And, and as I said, Sanford may take a closer look at this and say, that's not a good deal for us. And, and we may do the same thing. So. But we, you know, we think this is a, a really good thing. And, Chris, I appreciate you saying too, not a, not a last resort. But if, if we had four choices, which we don't, but this would still be a good choice. And, uh, I'll just reiterate again, uh, because I know how important it is and, um, discussions of, uh, layoffs and mergers were a, a thing for me and my family growing up. And it's, and it's really, um, scary, you know, when you talk about that. And, um, so, you know, Sanford is very interested in our employees. Uh, and I think if we don't make this merger happen, we need to watch out for that. But if we make this merger happen, that's a, that's a positive thing. And, uh, Chris, to appreciate you meeting with our employees right away. So two days after that Sanford meeting before. You know, this came upon an agenda or anything like that. Make sure we proactively get out to the employees. I think that's really important. For that time in particular, and then going forward to maintain that proactive, uh, conversation with our employees.
Yeah, I've offered to them and, and whether they want to do it collectively, I've asked folks to kind of work through their leadership to say, okay, you know. You know, if you're, if you're on the dry side of Diane, you know, talk to Mark Wright, you know, and have, you know, anybody can come and talk to me for sure. We're not that big by any means. But if you want to talk to me individually, I've all opened my door to say, feel free to come talk to me individually. I'm, I'll give you everything I've got. I'll be upfront and honest. I'm not here to. To tamper people's livelihoods. I take it very seriously. And this is, this is very serious to me. But if we want to have more conversations as a group, I think we'll have more of those. I want to keep a good pulse on this with folks because. I'm a very cognizant of morale. And we had already started some dwindling of that morale because people had gotten. Thought of this. And we, I think we lost a couple of employees that, from my understanding, that no one, you know, it's not in writing. But had just gotten said, I don't know what's going to happen. You know, we, we've heard about this stuff for years and I don't know really what's going to go on. And so some folks said, enough's enough. I'm just going to move on. Because I don't know what's going on. And so I think in a, perhaps a weird way, making this decision actually makes it a little easier. In some ways, because we've kind of committed to a decision. Certainly a lot of, a lot of finer particulars to, to, to define. But I, I hope that this brings some comfort to, to our folks to say, okay, we know what the plan is now. We're, it's not just conjecture. It's not hearsay. And so again, we'll make every effort we can to make sure everyone is, is comfortable. And, and I'm not naive to think that we're not going to lose someone along the way. There's a lot of people who need folks right now. And I, I have no doubt that somebody's going to say, I don't know. Um, I mean, I, my wife works for Truist Bank and BBNT and SunTrust just merged together and it's been tough. It's been a really challenging thing, different sectors of that. Um, in her individual, uh, I'll say department, if you will. She's been a long-term BBNT and they moved over to SunTrust. That's been really tough for her to adjust to. Um, and, and they've lost a lot of people in her division. I've been proud of her how she stuck it out and I feel the same part about our employees. Anybody, I think there will be a greater end to this. Um, and I hope that they. Um, and I hope that they see the investment that, that our partnership will create. With, with the city of Sanford and, and the improvements that are there. I know that's a check that can't be cashed tomorrow in terms of, of how we say that. And I know that creates anxiety, but. Uh, again, we're gonna do our very best to make sure that, that everybody on our side is, is as comfortable as they can be. Understanding that it's, it's gonna be largely uncomfortable for a while.
Just another group we haven't mentioned much in this discussion is our customers. And, uh, you know, the enterprise fund and water and sewer is, is a business and, and operates like a business. And certainly the customers and would, you know, we need to make sure that. Sanford maintains our, you know, excellent level of, of customer service and, and quality of water and, and all of those things. So that's a, you know, there's. There's a lot of stakeholders in this that, that will be in, informed throughout the process. Um, and a- as much as we talk about sewer capacity and as much as probably functionally been out of capacity since 1999. We're almost out of water capacity. And so even without this, with the growth of, of Chatham Park. You know, I think the projection is probably three to four years before we're out of water capacity, um, you know, without another plan. And.
Hey, Jordan, sorry.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. All right. So, um, you know, certainly the Jordan Lady Partnership is not going to fix that, that quickly. Um, and so, you, you know, the, the line coming from Sanford is a, is a good thing. And, you know, whether we, we're already in a partnership with Sanford in that. We're sending, you know, we're trying to build that line down to them. We're bringing the water line from them. And they are contracted to operate the Chatham Park Water Recovery Center. So. Um, they are working in our town today, uh, helping us with water and sewer issues. So. Um, a- all of those things, I think this is, uh, a, a really great option for, for Pittsburgh and. Um, excited to be acting on it.
So. The, the more we've learned about this and the more we've grappled with it. Uh, the more I've, uh, been forced to recognize that if we. Don't take this action to explore this opportunity. And try to figure out a way to make a merger happen potentially. Then likely what we're facing is more rate increases. And as uncomfortable as it was to vote for and to pay. The increases from last year. Which were much greater than this year. And then again, to revisit that decision with this budget tonight. Uh, I'm really not looking forward to doing that in future. But I'm also, uh, very concerned that. Uh, we have this very attractive downtown. This beautiful legacy Pittsburgh, as Mayor Perry calls it. With a lot of opportunities for infill development. Empty lots next to somebody's neighbor. Uh, or houses that, uh, clearly have been abandoned and need to be, uh, demolished or repaired. Um. We've got a lot of opportunity to increase the density of the old part of town. But we can't make that happen without additional sewer capacity. And water capacity. And so it's not just about the downtown area. It's also about, um. I mean, my, my interest in pursuing this, Mr. Kennedy, is, 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 it's about, uh. Seeking assurance of entry, increased capacity. Uh, a pathway towards increased capacity for the downtown core, for the Robinson Rock Walk Project. I think perhaps most important of all is for those red line neighborhoods. That. Fire Tower Road, for example. That, uh, property owners there. May not find it very appealing to be annexed into town and have town services, but. When we improve our drinking water, which is just around the corner. Uh, when we can offer them sewer capacity. Then those landowners might actually consider joining the town and having. Street side trash service and police protection. And I'm also very keenly interested in seeing increased capacity for an abundance of affordable housing. We need it so desperately. And we can't build it without sewer capacity. And we gotta have water for affordable housing. So, um. Mr. Kennedy, I'm really excited to hear that you signed the contract for the future land use plan. I think that's right on. I think that there's gonna be a great dynamic there. Uh, for the community conversations to help us think that's truth. Um, and for us as a community to decide how we want to grow. Outside of the boundaries of Chatham Park. Now that that is largely settled. Um. Those policies are set. It will be very, very interesting to hear those community, those conversations unfold. So, um. That's where I am on it. And, um, I, I guess there are two other things that I would mention on. Um. As we continue this conversation, as we answer so many of these questions. I hope they'll, we'll also challenge ourselves with some questions about whether or not there's any possible way for us to. Claw back a little bit of autonomy as we plan this project. Potentially with Sanford. Are there ways that we can get creative? To squeeze just a little bit more capacity out of what we've already got. Um. And then the final thing is that I hope that we get, uh. Uh, Mr. Messick, I hope that we can find some outstanding and highly experienced utilities. Uh, council. Independent legal counsel who can help us understand these. Uh, kinds of arrangements beyond what we've seen in Wake County. So. Thank you.
Further discussion or questions?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution declaring intent to regionalize the town of Pittsburgh. Water and wastewater utility with the city of Sanford.
Commissioner Ship has made the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Vos. Any further questions, clarifications? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
And as, as part of that, there'll, there'll be a letter sent from me to the city of Sanford, uh, communicating that to them. So that'll be out this week.
Thanks. Uh, the fourth, uh, matter under new businesses, board member appointments for the downtown Pittsburgh Advisory Board. Um, and we've already tortured poor Commissioner Ship with, um. He has become the master of the spreadsheet and, um, I have to admit that, that, um. I was probably more confused when I got all the clarification than I was to start with. But at any rate. Uh, Kyle Ship, would you like to take this away?
Sure. Um, just, just a little context. Uh, we, uh, we obviously started this ball rolling about last, uh, last fall. Um, with the intent to, uh, bring the Main Street program, uh, in, back into town with other downtown, uh, programs. And so, uh, this is really the, uh, the start of, of that effort, honestly, with, with forming this downtown advisory board. Uh, and, and placing representatives according to the criteria that we had, uh, said previously. So. Um, the, the talk about spreadsheets is, uh, you know, there's the, the item in our packet was, you know, different people. I think it's about eighteen or twenty people that applied and, and, you know, I think really excellent applicants and, and appreciate them. Uh, being willing to do that. And, um, you know, seven, seven members from, that are affiliated with the Main Street District specifically. Uh, four other members, some non-voting members. And then on top of that, uh. Typically will be three-year terms, but from the beginning will stagger those, those appointments. And so, um. That was too much for me to wrap my head around. So I made a spreadsheet and, uh, so I could sort and filter and highlight and, and do all those things and. Uh, you know, to, to talk to, talk to people and a lot of the applicants, things like that. And, um, so, so sent that out for the board to use. And I think thoroughly confused the board because they don't think it's spreadsheets necessarily like I do. So. Um, work, work through that though. Um, and, uh, I've, I've got a, a list here that I'll read off. Of, of my, um, suggestions and then we can have any, uh, discussion after that. And, uh, to say too, appreciate, uh, a couple of you being here and then who's ever on, on Zoom to. Um, sitting through the rest of this to, uh, to get to this item. So. Um, my, my suggestions are, uh, Robin Allgood from, uh, Southern Threads and, uh, lots of other things around town. For a one-year term. Uh, Samantha Bouchard from Pittsburgh Toys for a two-year term. Um, Sarah from Celebration Time, uh, NC for a one-year term. Uh, Jeff from Willie Cinnamon Rolls for a one-year term. Um, Dylan Perry from the Mod for a two-year term. Kathy Russell from Russell and Associates for a three-year term. Greg Stafford from Soco for a three-year term. Siobhan Moore from Hobbs Architects for a three-year term. Mackenzie Allgood from Preston Development for a three-year term. Heather Johnson from Chadon Business Services for a one-year term. Michael Whitman from Millennium Planning Group, uh, and currently on the Main Street, uh, Pittsburgh Board for a two-year term. And then Cindy Schmidt as the, uh, non-voting member for the Chatham Historical Society. And Debbie Andleton as the non-voting member for the Chatham EDC, uh, of course pending. Um, you know, acceptance from those groups. And then, uh, there, there's a couple of the groups that we would also like to have, uh. Representation from, um, and, and we can work on that, uh, going forward, one, once we shake this out.
How do we want to approach this? Is this, this is the slate that you're proposing? Is that, um?
Yes.
Okay.
Might be easier to have to make that just a motion.
Okay, I, I will make that a motion, what I previously said.
And can we, can we have a second so that we can get it on for discussion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrell. Um, so are there comments on both the methodology and the. Um, and the representation?
And, and I would just offer on the, on the term length, just for anyone listening in, I, I trust it's obvious to the board in many ways. Anytime you start a board, you want to have a proper stagger. So you're not reappointing eleven members in a single year. At times, we all know that it's very difficult to find a, a number of members. And I'm very appreciative of the folks and the, and the, the people that I've spoken with and their willingness to. To jump onto something. And, and many of the folks I've talked to, uh, Dylan in particular behind us here. Um, was, we're trying not to set up too many parameters for this. We really want this committee to kind of. The, the main mission is the town puts money every year. This, this year, the budget we just had adopted earlier, it's got eighty-five thousand dollars in it. Uh, directly into the downtown budget. And we, we, at the staff level, and I think at the board level, share this, that we want these folks to help us figure out what to do with that money. And, and so we're excited to have a group come in. And I know there's, there'll be some more, uh, uh, bumpers on the side of the lanes as we go down the road. But I think we're excited to see a group, a group come together. But when we look at the stagger, um, it's not that, you know. Uh, people have three years of value versus one year value. You just kind of have, you know, some level of input and somebody is, is there for a year and. And if you're there for one year, I'll, I'll, I'll pick on Robin Allgood because I enjoy picking on her in general. Um, but the, uh, my, my daughter goes to her daycare, so I'm able to pick on her a little bit for that. I'm a customer of her. So. Um, but with that, doesn't mean that she can't be reappointed to a three year after that. You know, we, you know, come back to this time next year. And say, hey, you know, uh, Ms. Allgo's done a great job for us. Let's appoint her to a three-year term. That's certainly on the table. Um, but in order to create the proper stagger, some folks have to be one, two, and then three years, of course. So. Um, and as we know, people, people don't oftentimes serve their full limit. They may move, they may find other circumstances that they can't serve the board and we'll deal with that accordingly. Um, so I appreciate Commissioner Ship, you know, kind of going through that. It was, in my own mind, I was going through how I would maybe do the list myself and. Certainly not my decision. So I didn't want to tamper with any of that. But the, but the tenure is, is one of the tougher things of it. So I appreciate his effort with that. But, uh, just wanted to make that more clear that there, there's no indication of, of value or anything like that. It's simply just trying to create a proper stagger. So we can have a good, solid board for years to come and, and maintain the institutional knowledge. People do turn off.
And, and Chris, that's, that's a good point about the, the task, that, that this is not a task force. It's an advisory board. So. You know, I had people ask me too, like, hey, I signed up. What did I sign up for? And, you know, so it was, it's up to you. We want advice. And, and so, uh, really did want to keep it open-ended and, um. And see what they come up with and see, you know, see what we come up with to get, to get advice from them. So.
Yeah, because I think, you know, this year we've got eighty-five thousand dollars in the budget for downtown. But next year I expect that number to be different. And I expect to come to the board with a recommendation from the downtown Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Advisory Committee saying. Here are the projects we want to do. Here are the endeavors we want to work on. And this is what our financial request is. I look forward to, to having that. Rather than just saying, hey, it's a generic eighty-five thousand dollars. We're trying to keep some continuity of service. I think we'll be much more intentional with those dollars next year. With the advice, uh, from those folks.
Uh, Commissioner Ship, yeah, thank you very much for your effort in helping organize this. Uh, uh, I do also think in spreadsheets, so it was, it was helpful. Um, I, I'm a little, little bit confused though. So I'd like you to ask, like to ask you to repeat the names if you would. Um, because I thought, I thought we had a different understanding and. So.
Sure. I think there's a slight, uh, slight change maybe, but, um, uh, Robin Allgood, one-year term. Samantha Bouchard, two-year term. Sarah DeStef, DeStefano, uh, one-year term. Jeff. Jacobett, one-year term. Dylan Perry, two-year term. Kathy Russell, three-year term. Greg Stafford, three-year term. Siobhan Moore, three-year term. Mackenzie Allgood, three-year term. Heather Johnson, one-year term. Michael Whitman, two-year term. And then, uh, Cindy Schmidt, non-voting from the Chatham Historical Society. And Debbie Andleton, non-voting from the Chatham EDC.
Great. Okay. I was typing while you were reading the first time and I, I missed.
Thank you. Maybe we would like to hear from our two, a couple of our committee members in the back.
We got a podium for you.
Yeah.
It seems like you guys are doing a pretty good job. Hard attacks with our water and sewer allegations. Your head, it has, uh, the city mayor is so excited about. It's happening fast. Business is, is growing and, um, fun to watch. Town that, and they're coming together. Still such a small town as well. The parks are great as well and, and some more trails would be nice, um, along the. Teachers and Angelic worse. For me, the, the third grade is she thanks for more working for. For me, working too nice. For me, the third grade and she thanks for more working for, for me, working too nice.
And for the record, this is Dylan Perry, no relation. All right. Well, we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Commissioner Farrell. Any further discussion? I'll enter, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Tonight's a good unanimous night. All right. Under miscellaneous tonight, we have two matters for information only. The North, the NC DOT STIP project update from the planning department. And is, is Teresa Thompson going to speak to us on that?
Teresa's a bit under the weather, so we'll give you the opportunity to, to go through this, just with any questions you may have or maybe a more targeted conversation on June 13th. Or, or again, if you feel like everything's been abundantly taken care of in terms of your information, we don't need to postpone. But I, I think Teresa, who, who serves on behalf of us and really the whole RPO, she's the chair of the, the staff side of, of the RPO. I know she wishes she could, she could speak directly with you tonight, but she's feeling under the weather. And I'd rather have someone tend to their health than, than try to force through this. And then maybe have a, a less than fulfilling conversation for the board. So I, I will just note the, the one of, of probably most concern for the town of Pittsburgh is the removal of NC 87 from the draft STIP or from the, from the 2033 year STIP. As many folks know, there was a reprioritization of projects. They looked at DOT refers to things as P. So P3, P4, and P5, they went through the prioritization of those projects. NC DOT is looking at a, I think it's an $8 billion funding deficit for those projects. As we discussed a, a little bit ago, some of those are resulting of some of those 2018 hurricanes that we had in the state. You know, massive highway projects got washed out literally. So there was a several hundred million dollars with those, almost a billion dollars in some of those repairs. There was also some, some damages paid out with the MAP Act and certainly with COVID, people not driving as much. A lot of that highway trust fund money comes from the gas tax and people aren't traveling anywhere. Certainly that, that takes a hit to it. So I think the good thing is, in some ways DOT got some projects taken care of, which is good. They spent some money that they had put away, but it also affected their ability to respond. And with the cost increases that we've all been subject to, both as small as Pittsburgh and as large as, as a division of highways for DOT, you know, increases of 20, 30% really, you know, kind of squander some project effort. So through that reprioritization, so the, the draft STIP that you have in front of you is, I think it's an April 22nd vintage for what was redone by NC DOT. Again, the predominant thing there, Chatham Parkway actually stayed into the STIP. And so that was one of the conversations we had. Mr. Messick and I had a conversation this week, we, we actually are going to have a miscellaneous item. It wasn't ready to put on the look ahead list on your agenda, but we're actually going to have miscellaneous item for your consideration for, obviously discussion at the June 13th meeting, talk about the acceleration project we talked about a number of months ago. We had originally had a, a little more haste with that because we were trying to potentially target beating the reprioritization for fear that would come out. And, but with the way timing worked, we weren't able to accommodate that. So we just put the, put the brakes on that and said, if it gets, if it gets reprioritized, we'll, we'll have the conversation again. So Mr. Messick and I met with his representatives at Chatham Park. And we intend to bring that to next, next meeting to have a conversation about how that project works. And if the town has any interest in moving that forward. So if nothing else, it might be a good segue either before or after the continuation of this item where Teresa and any of your first staff can, can come in and give you more detail about the, the draft STIP.
Thank you. I don't know that it's necessary that we get more information, but I, I'm hopeful that Commissioner Vos and, and Ms. Thompson can work diligently and, and report back to us, the board or to our staff, what more we can do to get, but get it back on the list. We got to get it back on the list. And so the question is, what do we need to do to do that? And I know that we have presented that to our legislative delegates. And I, I thank the mayor and, and staff for preparing that list. But the widening of Highway 87 is, is going to be increasingly important as that industrial development happens south of us. I think Commissionership put it spot on that we hope the CAM site in Southern City will be developed. I think we can reasonably hope that it will become an ecosystem of vehicle manufacturing, hopefully electric vehicle manufacturing. And that means that the two points will be connected by lots and lots of vehicles transit, traveling back and forth with heavy loads. We don't want those to have to go through our town circle. We, we want to help them go down 87. And so improving Highway 87 is really, really important. I, I, I also, you know, just rhetorically, I'm, I'm, I'm just puzzled how we got here because I, I'm sure that it was before 2018 when I understood it to be on the STIP list. I think that it was on there before then. Mayor Pret temporary Baldwin, perhaps you remember how long 87 improvements have been in discussion?
Well, I, I would say to that, as, as someone who used to serve on, on Tarbo, obviously for a different jurisdiction, but you know, dating back to 2013, when I came in, it was P 2.0. And, you know, those projects can be on those prioritization lists for many, many years.
Until they get funding.
Yeah, and, and I think one of, one of the greater things that Tarbo did back at that time, the, the procedure was that each county got a certain number of projects, whether they were good projects or not. And, and a lot of that became politically charged. And so I know with, with P3, we shifted that. And then I believe it was either P3 or P4, we had $187 million in projects funded, which was by far the most of any RPO in the state. Mayor Perry, I think you were part of, part of that group as well, back on the Tarbo days. But I, I think the, yeah, I mean, there could, someone could be on there for 20 years and never score enough. And then there's certainly there's projects because the Florida submit at the local level to get points. There's projects that are regional that NC DOT submits points for. And, and as I said before, I think they'd make it confusing enough where no one can quite pin it down. And DOT picks the products they want to do anyway. And the, the algorithm is so confusing that you wouldn't bother to question it. And, and so I think that that's a modernization project for a lot of that stretch. And modernization generally does not score very well because it doesn't really pull congestion. And DOT really tried to focus on congestion projects with reprioritization. So we, we figured that certain parts should be kicked out. We didn't, we did not have a, you know, an advance notice that 87 was. Frankly, we didn't know until we got the list from, from that day. Topper liaison. So I think to, to your overall point about what the town can do, I think you, it's primarily conversations with Representative Reeves.
Okay.
And, and, and moving that forward and trying to target that. Because DOT, you know, they programmed out the money they had. So unless other funding is made available to them, there's nothing left to program.
Yep.
And they kicked out certain other projects too. So I, I would say that probably the most advantageous would be, I won't say circumvent the Tarbo process, but certainly go to the legislative side of it and, and seek funding that way.
Okay, yeah.
And I'd like to think that Chatham Park, now that some of their wish list has been fulfilled, may be able to help us feel a little less like we're competing with them for project approval and, and really help us to, to get approvals for the things we need on the west side.
And Chris, just a kind of, again, the process is not clear, but it, it was, it seems like it's still on the list, but it was removed from funding.
Correct.
Which, I mean, obviously a project needs funding, but there's a lot of other projects that are not on the list at, at all. So can you just try and explain that?
Yeah, so in any individual step, there are 10 years programmed out. So the step we have right now is the one that was just released is the 2024 to 2033 step. And the step rules change for every step. And so generally, it's the first five or six years are considered funded and committed. In the last four or five years, again, it varies because they set up different rules for each one. They, this is, this is an every two-year process. So it's not done every year. So Commissioner Vos was a part of a conversation a few months ago with Teresa, looking at P7. And P7 numbers won't come out until 2023, when they go through that effort. Again, takes two years. And so a project, once a project is funded, it no longer has to be reviewed with the same scrutiny than a project that is not on that list. So it may not be committed, but as long as it stays funded, it goes back through the call for, it doesn't have to be resubmitted. And one of the things that helps with that is any project that is funded but not committed doesn't count towards the number of projects that Tarbo can submit. So we get 14 projects from Tarbo per mode of transportation. Obviously, we don't have a lot of ferry projects to submit between Orange County, Chatham County, Lee County, and, and, and Moore County. And then the, the, you know, the airport projects are primarily the Raleigh Exec and the Moore County Regional. Sour City does have an airport, but I don't think it qualifies for, for that level of funding. That may have changed. So mainly we're talking about bike and pad and highway projects and we get 14. So there's an advantage of having something funded but not committed because it doesn't count towards your list. But unless something is listed as funded and committed, it's not technically funded, as confusing as that is.
Yep, confusing.
Right, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, that is confusing. Yeah, I won't.
If you always change the games, if you always change the rules of the game, it's harder to play, except for the people making.
Right, and they, and they change it every, every prioritization. And so they, they tweak it. And so e- even though, again, we've been very fortunate to have Matt Day with Triangle J Council Governments be that. I mean, because there are many times, and I, I don't know if I would ever want to admit it or not, but when something comes up, everybody looks at Matt and like, okay, we're good. And, and so Matt's been a really good stalwart for us on behalf of the cog. And he's got, he's got a good promotion recently for mobility and he deserved it. He works very hard, so. Yeah, so I'm not sure. Again, we put this item on the agenda to discuss this. If there's more targeted conversation, happy to try that this evening. Or if you feel like we need to move that to the 13th, I'm happy to, to bring this back on your agenda and put it back on miscellaneous. Certainly at your discretion.
I'm content in terms of briefing, but Mr. Kennedy, I am curious whether or not it would strengthen our hand to have a formal statement from this board, a unanimous vote regarding 87 and the importance of that project to alleviating traffic in the downtown circle area, et cetera, et cetera. Would that be valuable? Would that be useful?
Or? I don't, I don't think it could hurt. I mean, similarly, when we, we look at, you know, last year when we applied for earmark funding at the federal level of Congress surprise, you know, the board was generally in support of it. I don't, I don't recall us ever doing like a formal resolution for it. But we did have letter of support, Mayor Nass at that time, and then Michael Fioco both submitted letters of support. We had to submit, you know, newspaper articles and stuff to kind of substantiate the need. So anything like that, that would help, you know, Representative Reeves or others with that, I think would be helpful. So I, I'll lean on the board to say, if you want to make a unified statement on that, that's fine. If, if you want to empower the mayor to, I'll say lobby on the board's behalf, I think that's fine too. You know, there, there's multiple ways to probably navigate that.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's an interesting project too, with, with the rules currently being that, you know, congestion is more likely to be funded than modernization projects. But in this case, that modernization project would help congestion on, on a road over. Yeah, so, you know, I don't, I'm sure that doesn't fit in the formula anywhere, but it, it would have a significant impact on 15501 currently on, on Hillsborough and Sanford Streets if we were able to, to modernize that road.
Yeah, and, and, and that does affect some because you can put that in the traffic model. And, and, you know, they run a, you know, a 30-year number out in the model and they see when the road fails. And when, I mean, you fail, I talk about the, the level of service. If you're looking at LOS, I mean, choose a character by, by letter. A means basically it's free flow traffic. And then everything else that decreases that, that level of service is amount of delay. And, you know, it, the level of delay and how the road fails depends on the type of road. You know, a small street, you might have a, a level of delay of 30 seconds, but that road may be functioning fine. If you had a 30-second delay on NC 85 where you weren't moving, you'd be very concerned while you aren't moving for 30 seconds. And so it depends on the, the, the character of the road with that. But occasionally they, they can expand that scope or DOT is willing on occasion to expand that scope to pull in other roads to show the alleviation of congestion. And so I think that would probably be our target there is to show that, that 87 is not bogged down, but other roads are bogged down because 87 can't accommodate a greater flow of traffic.
Yeah.
And so it's painting that picture. And there's other conversation, you know, the, the, there was an article, I think, in Channel Record a few months ago, talking about 640 connecting basically 421 connecting down to Sanford, creating a 640 going to kind of between the, the two mega sites. So there's some coordination between all those. And all this is a big system in understanding what creates the best bang for the buck. And DOT is like the rest of us, we're probably behind. We don't do very many proactive things. We would love to be more proactive, but more times than not, we aren't as proactive we'd like to be. So they're catching up on other congestion things that maybe are a greater concern. But I think, I think we can, we certainly have a reasonable case. We've got, you know, the state has invested a great deal of money in this region in, in close proximity to us. And nothing will stifle that quicker than having a road that doesn't work.
Would the board be interested in authorizing me to pursue that with Representative?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor? It, it is a unanimous decision that the board would like me to pursue Highway 87 as an alternative with the upcoming steps. So, okay, thank you. Our last item for this evening is the agenda for the upcoming joint meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the county and, and our board. And so that is for discussion only. You were, let's see, the date on that is?
June 9th.
June 9th.
Be June 9th in, in this facility at 6:00 PM. And so I, I, I had a conversation earlier today with, uh, the clerk to the Board of Commissioners for the county about getting an agenda. I let her know that we were having this item tonight and that certainly we would try to find an amenable agenda between the two boards. You know, and there's a multitude of things we could likely talk about. And so I don't think we shouldn't, shouldn't anticipate this is the only meeting we can have. And this may be the, the beginning. We haven't had one in a while, was a joint session between the two boards. But yeah, I think simply place this on the agenda tonight to go over a few topics, see if there's any thing that, that stirs your heart the most. And then to see if there's a commonality with the county commissioners and go by setting agenda from there.
Well, I guess communication seems to be my biggest concern. I just don't think there's a sufficient amount of consider communication between the two boards. Does anybody else feel that way? Does anybody else feel that way? Or do you just not need another meeting?
I think that communication is very important, because oftentimes you hear that they're that the county is going to move all the offices out to Renaissance Drive and all of that. We need some clarification in reference to what their plan is. Are they planning to stay here within the city limits, which I would certainly hope they would? But are they moving to Renaissance Drive? What is the situation with them? What's their plans? And what can we do to discuss their plans with them?
So I'll take that as two things. I'll take that as one is communication, and two is what you're playing about where you're moving to.
Yeah.
I think those are two topics.
Yes.
Just a little further on on the the second one, I agree with, I agree with the first. Like, I I think it communicate well with individual commissioners and and things like that, but at at a board level, I think we can be better both ways communicating, you know. It may be a surprise to them this evening that we intend to merge with Sanford. So, you know, both ways for that, I think. And then, yeah, with definitely with Department of Winter Enterprise Drive, like we know, we had the discussion about the school building because of sewer capacity. And then I know the Emergency Operations Center is moving out there, not on sewer. There may be some emergency reason for that that Colby could tell us about, but likely more. Right, I mean, so, you know, we don't have capacity for them to go out there. That's that's close to town out there, you know, what what is the plan? And i- if if that is the plan, and we everything out there, we can't change that, then what happens to all of the the property and the buildings and things that are in Pittsburgh currently? Make the best out of that. And, you know, the, what is it, the the MOU that we have for for the property, you know, potentially extend that to additional properties, if that's the plan.
That we'd like to bring up.
Yeah. Just to to reiterate that that the the importance of of tight and close collaboration on the the vision of their campus and their process for relocating it. Any transitions that can happen after they leave buildings like the school board offices. I I feel a sense of urgency about continuing that vision process for the county school board buildings in particular, because I feel so optimistic about the likelihood of us getting more capacity for both water and sewer. And I would very much like us to have all our ducks in a row in advance of that. In in terms of what what is the vision for the old school board buildings? And and what can we do creatively together? And there are a lot of little things as well. Maybe this is down too much into the weeds, but literally the weeds. I exchange concerns with a a county commissioner about NCDOT's process for weed management and right-of-way clearing. I think it's long past time that we need to ask for elimination of herbicides in that application and for use of physical means of removal and control instead. I think that DOT, excuse me, Duke Energy has already moved that direction, but if we could work together, if indeed there's an appetite for such a joint statement between the county and the town to to say that we would very much like NCDOT and Duke Energy to stop using herbicides in those situations. Along the highways, it's just so very conspicuous and unsightly when they do use the herbicides, because the dead trees just linger there for three years till they lose their leaves. And I understand they did it over the lake as well, which is our reservoir. Well, other people's drinking water reservoir. It seems shocking that anyone would apply herbicides that close to a drinking water source, but another item, I think that it would be useful for us as we think about greening our operations in terms of energy efficiency, in terms of transition to electric vehicles, that we should speak with them about what their plans are, because we can achieve economies of scale by working together.
Two extra months about mail now. I think that's an important one. Since we are, we overlap in so many ways, and our constituencies are very similar and exact in in a micro portion. You know, all of our, all of our citizens and residents are also county citizens and residents. And so I think one of the things that's important to have some agreement to with the county, and it doesn't, agreement doesn't mean that we do the same thing. Agreement means that we understand what each other are doing. Is that, you know, if if the town of Pittsburgh says, you know, by twenty twenty-six, we're going to be all Vinfast vehicles for town vehicles. Well, then that puts a lot of onus on Chatham County to react, or vice versa. And so I think those, that's, you know, important topic individually, but also as a as a prompt for other things of saying, what we do has a ripple effect in that, on both of both sides. We we overlap, we're so close. You know, the same residents in many instances that, you know, there's a little bit of gap between us and even Sour City. So we're compared more often to the county than we are even to Sour City. So I think that's part of the coordination of understanding the objectives of this board and in the town versus what the county wants to do. And the county may have a very plausible reason not to do something, because they care for a far greater jurisdiction. But we, just the same, we wouldn't want to be called saying, well, gosh, I didn't even think about us doing that. That sounds like a good idea, but we're not prepared. We might be able to have a conversation with the county that would preempt that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's a dream of having a an electrified transit vehicle between the new hotel and the agricultural conference center here, and the beverage district and the the downtown district. So hopefully, we can coordinate and collaborate on something like that. So, yeah, thank you.
I have to cut off your list. We have others. Please, please let them.
No, no, that's, that's, that's covered my list.
By the way, do you know that the town public work staff has converted to using a organic weed control downtown?
I remember.
And and buys it. It's a local product at the plant, which, I mean, boy, talk about a win-win. That is just amazing. And you and I have both talked about that for years, and and it was just so wonderful to stop and have a conversation with one of the, one of the workers about that. It was absolutely terrific.
Yeah, yeah, and I want to give praise to staff for the existence of of our integrated pest management plan. And and that's something that I'm I'm not even sure, Mr. Colby, that that the public knows about that. But that's a, that's a statement, and it's got some age on it. We did it in twenty nineteen. And so we can continue to build upon these things. Thank you.
Stuff that's bad for you works a lot better, but the, but that stuff works pretty good, too.
I know, I've tried, I've tried the one that has the dawn and the, and the, and the other things, but it doesn't work very well. All right.
I think, too, just some, I I mean, these are larger topics, which which may be appropriate for a meeting like this. But, you know, economic growth in the area and how, you know, Vinfast and hopefully soon, so so the tip side and hopefully soon the camp site will affect Pittsburgh here in the middle. And, you know, what the county is doing for that. So I know there, you know, I I hear some of that at the the EDC meetings and working on a small area plan for Moncur, you know, so those things. Water quality and quantity, sewer capacity. You know, we we made a a big move this evening, obviously for us, but the the county is in many ways in the same boat as we are. And we likely have some some shared solutions there, too. So just kind of, you know, wh- what they're thinking going forward for the next ten, twenty years, what we're thinking. We said the the Department of Winter Enterprise Drive, and then also, you know, I I'm not sure how long it's been since we've had a joint meeting with them. But I I think it'd be great to have a regular cadence of those meetings with once a year, twice a year. But recognizing that we're we're Pittsburgh and they're Chatham County, and they've got Sour City, Goldston and Bear Creek, you know, all these other places to worry about that aren't Pittsburgh. And limited time in the evenings for meetings, like like we all have. But but I think that's, it, I think it's important for for us and for the public to, you know, see that collaboration. And it and it to be a regular thing that we can all count on at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I mean, if we can factor something in, just like anything else, if you, with far enough lead time, and it may be something where, you know, the, right now, we we have one meeting in July and one meeting in December. There there's no magic while we have two meetings in September. So the, we set the schedule every year at the end of the year for the next calendar year, that if the board said, hey, I'd love to have a joint session, but I really don't want to have more meetings, then you might just have, you know, a regular business meeting for, you know, the the first or second meeting, and certainly just cancel the second one and say, we're going to have a joint session at some point in the month of September, if that turns out to be the month, or any other month that you see fit. And so there's a way to work around it. I'm not sure the county would would want to accommodate that as well, but, you know, we're not county officials, so we're not going to their meetings anyway, so. But if that's a concern about the number of meetings, and certainly we all want to be sensitive to cost, the more you have, the harder it is to do this job. It's it's hard to get, I mean, y'all are volunteers for this. And if I said, hey, we're going from twenty-four meetings a year to forty-five meetings a year, you go, whoa, my commitment to this board has changed dramatically. And so we can, we can work with that. And again, with enough lead time, again, having a meeting every two weeks is is pretty frequent as it is. So, you know, certain items getting pushed off for another two more weeks is generally not that very a concern.
I mean, I would think to that point that it it'd be great if we could have a joint meeting on both of our schedules when
Yeah.
when we set them into September, you know, plenty, and and I like the idea of of replacing one of ours or two of ours with a with a joint meeting, maybe even larger to include other municipalities.
Yeah, I don't know if Goldston would want to do very much with that, but Sour City might be interesting.
Especially with their, I'm sorry, especially with their new leadership that's coming in, so that might be.
Well, and a derivative of this, but would there be an interest in having a joint session with the municipality of Sour City and not the county?
Sure.
Looking at county things and how there's, you know, it's a crossover there at times. Not not the same crossover jurisdiction as is with the county, for sure, but again, separate topic, but to the point.
We could always have that, and in addition to that, we could always add school board as well. At one time, we did have joint meetings with all the municipalities, as well as the school.
When we were grappling with the additional elements. Yep.
Oh, thank you. That was a little add-on that I sent out previously. So, so, yes. You know, there's, right, well, and there's been recent talk about hotel incentives, which I think we both have in a way, but they're different. Affordable housing incentives, which we both have in a way, but they're different. So I I think alignment would be good on those, in in some other ones that they have that we don't have. You you know, it'd be, it'd be great for us and helpful for developers and organizations to to have some alignment on that. I think even economic development, that we could go, this is the package that you get.
Well, I think to that end, are are we stubbing our toe not talking to one another? Where we're having an incentive conversation, and they're having incentive conversation, and they're almost mutually exclusive, but if we came together, that incentive package would obviously be more lucrative. They may put the pieces together, because we have different taxing jurisdiction, if that's what we're talking about in terms of like an incentive of abating taxes or something like that. But, yeah, there's there's probably better ways. And as you know, being on the EDC, there's a lot going on, and there there needs to probably be better coordination for some of these endeavors, because they move quick, and if we don't have those relationships established, they'll pass right on by us.
Yeah, we won't even know about them.
Right.
And and I think particularly for affordable housing, too, it it's a there's a lot to keep track of for affordable housing projects. And so the more incentives that have different policies and and benchmarks, it just makes it even harder to do those projects, so.
Yeah, and it behooves the county to have some of those economic level of projects in the municipalities, because that's where the services, the jobs, where all those things are located, more often than not. So the county is going to want to be in Pittsburgh to provide those affordable housing opportunities, because they want them to be closer to the services that are more urban.
Yeah.
Than rural.
Yeah.
So they're going to be in our jurisdiction as it is.
Plus, their their planning documents concentrate growth in the municipalities mainly, and, yeah. There you go. Yep.
But thank you for that reminder, Mr. Fess. He started when he was three.
All right, are we, are we sufficiently discussed with that final item, or?
Recreation.
Yes.
I just, I I know at the staff level, a lot of conversation occurs about, I think the county feels my term, not theirs, burdened by the lack of facilities that we have from a recreation side. And particularly ball fields and things of that nature. And so I I I feel like that would be something that we want to discuss.
Yeah.
By our lack of facilities, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that that was a.
We don't have, we don't have programming capacity right now. We don't have the facilities. And so as the county wants to be more like a county and not running those services, I think they'd like to pass that baton eventually. And I think they'll still run some semblance of it, but certainly as we grow, I think that's probably what makes them nervous is they say, well, gosh, Pittsburgh has utilized the county services for many years, and they've got fifty thousand people. We hope that Pittsburgh is going to be running their own recreation department. So I think that might be something.
Yeah, I I know the the conversation that I had was that the county would like to be more regional, you know, how do we connect a greenway across Chatham County, and how do we enable that unless running soccer leagues in Pittsburgh?
Right, similar to what we're doing with the Hall River Trails Initiative. You know, where, you know, Chatham Park is going to deliver trails in the North Village along the Hall River, and we're we're working in coordination with them, with the county, as well as Alamance County, to bring trails to connect. And ultimately does the Mount to Sea Trail. So I think the the county is a good conduit, because, you know, if I'm calling Burlington, there's a long way between us two to figure out a book trip.
Would it, would it be worthy of discussion, broaching the subject of the the Western Intake Partnership? And whether or not they would be interested in working with us to try and accelerate? I mean, or is it entirely because of the other partners that project must proceed the pace that it's proceeding?
I don't know that it's dependent on the partners. I think there's just a lot to get permitted. There are are three portions, moving the governance, the the plan, the other types of mechanic type stuff, moving that forward, understanding how those go forward, to having proper public outreach with that. You know, looking at the envision process right now for some of the sustainability side of it. I think it just is, it takes a lot to move forward.
Okay.
As we've told on recently, is that it's slowly becoming more of a Durham project. You know, they just inundate us with staff, not not by intention, but, I mean, they have a Department of Water Resources. I've got Ken. The county's got their guy. And and so it's, it's very tough to to bring enough clout to the table, enough energy to the table to keep that moving forward, so probably unintentional, but it's running at Durham's pace, because they're the one paying the bill, and we're reimbursing them, and they've got more capacity to devote to it. And so I I think that's, that's, that's a positive externality of Sanford conversation is Sanford will have a greater ability to inject some energy and capacity into that to help us stir over that back to Chatham County.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my understanding, they they have, they have, our capacity is double accounted for in the county's. That when they were divvying allocations,
Yes.
they weren't aware whether we had allocation or not.
Yes.
So they got it for us.
Yes.
And so there is, there is millions of gallons a day on the table. That's why we've looked to go on six to nine without really affecting very. Without really affecting very much because the kind of we're already factored your six dollars anyway.
Yeah.
If they take an extra three and you take a three, then we're good.
Let's put that on the agenda then. I mean, it's in line with their sustainability plans. It's in line with their master land use plan. That that growth should be concentrated. That there should be greater density and therefore the resources should should go to the place where they say it should be concentrated.
Yeah.
Just makes sense. Understood.
Sure.
Yep. But they've looked out us after us for for some time and and yeah, we can have that conversation. So.
One thought of is that that they're going through a U D O process right now.
Yes.
So just how we could further coordinate with them, what we found good and bad in in our U D O, maybe not, may not be interested in our process. But, you know, or what we, what they would see, we might want to change in ours to to be further aligned for development projects, affordable housing, those type of things. You know, if they uncover some some new idea in their process that we could work in and align on that, particularly where they show. Where they're encouraging development based on their U D O.
Well, continuity of development standard is helpful. It. There's, there's a. There's probably a logical way to really kind of separate urban versus rural standards in terms of the development limits. But. Particularly where you have an expanding jurisdiction, which we have, certainly the the larger E T J helps us because we have zoning control of the E T J, but not, you know, taxing jurisdiction. That helps, but there are certainly things where we don't want to be. You know. Putting ourselves out of having projects because the zoning regulations are too burdensome.
Right.
Or having the counties just be just completely incongruent what we're trying to do. So having some sort of. Healthy transition of standards, recognizing that what's in the French of Pittsburgh may not be the same as what's in Bonly. But understanding how the two can go forward.
Correct.
Correct. Sounds like a lovely conversation. Okay, I've got twelve topics.
I mean, I think.
Something will come up.
That's gonna be a long meeting. So I mean, I think with coordination with them too, hopefully maybe they have something we haven't thought of. Or maybe they say, hey, Will, we'll send you a memo on this, but let's not talk about it in the meeting, but for time.
Or just acknowledge it.
Right.
And and say, you know, one of the topics is, hey, we agree, we'd love to have more meetings or don't remember what that might be, but we'd love that idea.
We'd love to have more meetings. He he said, speak for yourself with wanting more. Which I agree with.
Probably at a point where we need a resolution to adjourn, I mean, a motion to adjourn.
Can we, can we go around if there are additional concerns?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Jay Farrell, do you have any additional concerns?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Kyle Sheen?
I just one quick comment on the setup here. I think this setup was really good for our, it was heavy discussion this evening. And so I think it worked pretty well for that. A little harder to see the other end, but but if we were screen heavy, which we were not this week, I don't think it's great. You know, to be looking up like that. So. Maybe, you know, something different next time. We'll try it.
Yeah. So so to to pull more information, what brought in at the beginning of the meeting is. We've got June thirteenth and then the twenty seventh. We we then take a bit of a break because we don't have a meeting, the first meeting of July. We come back, we'll be, I think it's July twenty seventh is the the meeting, the one meeting there. I'm I'm looking to tinker for the next two meetings to see what works best. And then hopefully by the time we get to that second meeting in July, again, we're always able to to manipulate to for better success. But to try to get to our our spot then for that July meeting is that 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 would be the, also, again, if we have an epiphany on June thirteenth, you go, Chris, this is it. We've not touched this. We are good. I'm fine to keep that moving forward, but the goal is to tinker a little bit, see what the feedback is both from the board and from the public. And then move forward with that. And then certainly as we start bringing in people into the rooms, that will affect some of that as well. So we'll try to keep that in back of our minds.
And I fear that we need to to stay where we are about people coming into the meetings. Just because of the recent uptick in COVID and. And I think it would be wise if we just did not extend, I mean, of course, we needed to do that with the with the basketball team, but. But I I think we still need to restrict the. Visitors.
I agree.
I I I I think that's fine. I think what we have, you know, maybe a couple of people want to come, that that's fine on the. And I I do think it personally, I think it's okay if we have applicants that that want to come, you know, one or two from an applicant wants to come and speak to us. I I would personally prefer that to to Zoom, but I don't want to see it, you know, fifteen person team in in here talking. If there's, if there's more than one or two, you know, I'd say have have the experts in in reserve. On Zoom, but I do appreciate the in-person interaction with applicants and.
If we run into a question judicial item, especially use permanent, that will, that will test us. In terms of format, but legislative items, normal business like we had tonight, you know. Give us a little more freedom to set up.
Okay, we're, James?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Now, do we need a motion to adjourn?
Sure. So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye. See you next time.